Never been misprepared.
Good evening. This is February 2, 2022, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. It is 2:22. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. You have a motion to approve the agenda. Denise?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second from Brian. Any changes? All those in favor of the agenda? Seven in favor. The agenda is approved. All right, we are now at public comment, so we've got three minutes per person. We've got Darren Keller from Lee first.
Good evening. I'm Darren Keller from Lee. We have a member of the board, a member of Terrell, who is, was a big proponent for the DEIJ positions. Unfortunately, she also is employed by the Karsee Institute at UNH. That same organization is also the spearhead behind New Hampshire Listens. So this is more than just a casual relationship. It's actually a direct relationship. Not only being a director of policy, but New Hampshire Listens themselves, you can actually go look on their website about, you know, active facilitation. So Member Terrell has actually not only been involved in those discussions on the committee, which New Hampshire Listens has used, but the output of that committee that was facilitated by New Hampshire Listens was also one of the major impetus and reason given for why the board took a position to add a DEIJ position into the budget. It is my contention, due to conflict of interest, as well as the conflict of New Hampshire Listens, that the vote that was taken to add that should be spoiled and stricken.
All right, and Lauren Selig from Durham.
Good evening, and thank you all very much. First of all, I want to thank the Middle School Design Committee. I know the middle school is getting ready to open. I was glad to have a tour recently. But I love the fact that there are single-stall bathrooms on every level, which is really important for all students, especially for those who are transgender or gender fluid, to have a safe place to use the bathroom. I also am really grateful for the work the DEIJ committee is doing. The forum last week that was intended to build bridges and allow people to have conversations was really well-run, and I appreciate the effort being put in to help people hear perspectives from all different sides. So thank you for that. Last week at your school board meeting, or last meeting, a student spoke about wishing for some flexibility in order to celebrate a religious holiday that's not part of the Christian calendar. And it goes along with something that I've been asking for for 11 or 12 or 16 years. And I forwarded a policy to you that the city of Portsmouth just adopted, which was a resolution as having pride in being an open-door city and as we're one community that has pride in accepting all people, that they, where they don't hold meetings on religious holidays and federal holidays recognized by the federal government, that they also are going to adopt a religious holiday policy to discourage the city from holding meetings on commonly-accepted religious holidays, such as Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, or like the one the student brought up last week, which was the Lunar New Year. And so I'm going to share a copy. I'll hand that off of that policy. I did email it to the board. But I do hope it'll be taken into consideration. Instead of thing requesting a small change to next year's calendar, where if the calendar was changed by two days, a teacher workshop would happen on Yom Kippur instead of two days later, which would mean that none of the Jewish kids would have to make a decision about whether to go to school or whether to go to services. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Morse, do we have any email public comment?
None tonight, Michael.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes. From January 19, we have regular and non-public minutes. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 19.
We have a motion from Denise, a second from Brian. Any changes to those minutes? Denise?
I have two. On page two, under the board, it says Tom Nuker said he will be going to Concord to testify against House Bill 1255, which affects what could go on in history. It would be nice to change what's going on in history.
It's a little bit ABO, so...
But it should be "Go On In The Teaching Of History." So that's the first change. And then at the very top of page five, let's see. After the list of items that are being considered, playground outdoors, sports equipment, library patio, I did make a comment, and I'd like it to say that Denise stated that her priority would be the items for the concert hall.
All right, Tom?
I sent in a change, and I have to look at Denise's. Page six. It reads Tom Nuker felt it seemed too early to have a teacher workshop day in September. I really didn't mean it to be that. I think Tom Nuker, sorry, I sent in and corrected the wording. Tom Nuker asked the question of whether it would be too early to have a teacher workshop day in September. Would that change the...
On the same, in the same section, I would just like to move my comment that's below the motion to above the motion, that that happened before the vote, before motion passed 4:21. Others? With those changes, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 19? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor.
Karen, did you get all the changes?
And the non-public minutes? Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for January 19.
All right. A second from Brian. Any changes there? All those in favor of the non-public minutes for January 19? Seven in favor. Minutes are approved. All right, that brings us to announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district.
Good evening. Misty Lowe from Masway School. I have two or three special events that have been occurring at Masway that I'd love to share with the board and the community listening. I'm going to share a couple of them, and I brought one of our very famous unified arts teachers, music teachers in the district, who will be sharing about an experience our fourth graders are doing right now with a song residency. But I want to give that glory to Pam. I just want to share that our fourth grade leadership team has led a school-wide event for the Great Kindness Challenge. We've done a lot of activities. We've pledged to be kind. We're doing a paper chain around our school gym of acts of kindness. So that's been a good activity for our students, led by our students. Today, some of you may know, was Global School Play Day. So Masway School celebrated a lot of learning through unstructured play today. And the students really loved it. We got a lot of positive feedback from our parents. And it's just an important day to internationally recognize the importance of play. And then I'm going to turn the floor over to Pam, so she can share with you a wonderful song-writing residency that our fourth grade students are experiencing.
Thank you, Misty, for inviting me to speak tonight, and thank you to you, the school board. Thank you for keeping us safe during this pandemic. I really appreciate it, and I know many of my colleagues do as well. Thank you for all of your work. This year has been interesting, and like educators throughout all the district, we've had to invent new ways of doing things. And as a performing arts music educator, performance has not been a part of what we've been able to do yet. I'm looking forward to that day. So last year and this year, we were fortunate to be able to hire Kid Pan Alley, which is a group songwriting residency. So group songwriting is a much different thing than individual songwriting. So each class is working with the artist to write a song. And so we're doing a lot with our writing, but we're also doing a lot with music. So in times of joy, sadness, or challenging times, we often rely on a song. And how great to have a song that you wrote. So this residency will give our fourth graders, hopefully, a memorable and lasting experience. It's music for life. It's something they can take with them forever. Last year, all four songs had to do with the pandemic, and they were incredible. Happy to say that this year, one out of four has to do with the pandemic. The other three have to do with normal, more normal things. So I think that's a good sign. Kid Pan Alley's mission is to inspire creativity, build confidence, and foster community among children of all ages throughout this group songwriting process. We've been holding these workshops virtually. So every student is on their laptop, and we are talking to the artists who are in Virginia. And the artists are Paul Reisler, Cheryl Toth-Reisler, and Natalia Zupperman. So Paul Reisler started Kid Pan Alley in 1999, and since that time, he's written over 3,000 songs with 65,000 children, from New Hampshire to Hawaii. He made the discovery early on that children make the greatest songwriters, because they're so honest. Cheryl Toth is an elementary school music teacher, and for a while, she was supervising 136 schools for the Fairfax County Public School District. And then she was a principal. Then she joined Kid Pan Alley and Mary Paul. Natalia Zupperman, I know you've heard that name somewhere, but she is a musician, painter, and educator who grew up in New York City with her father, Pinkus Zupperman, having released eight independent albums. So these are the three artists. So I'm going to read to you just a little bit of each song. Mrs. Farhill's class. This is, this is also something that is so close to my heart when I get to meet and do it with a classroom teacher, when we're not separate, when we're community. Callie likes homework. Oh, by the way, Callie is not a real person. Callie likes homework, and I just don't understand why. That's probably why she's so smart, probably why her grades are off the chart. She knows about everything under the sun, but she misses out on all the fun with her friends. Homework makes me angry, and I'd rather be calm, but mom makes me do it, even if I get it wrong, even though it takes me so long, but Callie doesn't seem to mind it at all. So this one has one more session. Mrs. Gerard's fourth graders, flying like a bird. Sleeping on a cloud, spending my life looking at the world flying by, singing my song, watching the seasons change. Up here is where I belong. The birds see more of the world than we can from where we stand. When the weather turns cold, they fly away, but they'll come back on a warm spring day. Mrs., Mr. Henry's class, animals. Ants build anthills, bees build hives, beavers build lodges, and I built a home for all the animals left out in the cold, abandoned, and alone. They have nothing to eat. They're wounded and weak. My heart is heavy for those poor creatures. Their spirits live on, even after they're gone. I'll try to help them, because they help me. They're the ones wild and free. And finally, the song that was finished today is by Mrs. Stacy's fourth graders called Trapped Behind The Mask. Alexander, hit it!
I'm riding this roller coaster. Up and down, around and around. So many changes, stuck in invisible cages. Trapped behind the mask, can't escape. Need to try to make it through. Learn to speak with our eyes. Saying signs from behind our disguises. I'm riding this roller coaster.
So in, finally, I would like to say thank you so much for supporting the arts for all children, because it is, it's so important, and I appreciate it. All of the fourth graders, all the fourth grade teachers, and myself can say with great confidence, we are all songwriters. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith, Principal of Moheramet. I just wanted to give you some updates about where we are as a school. Our theme this year is Year of the Artist, and I want to tell you about January and February for Year of the Artist. The month of January, we wanted to celebrate and investigate winter art. And so we were very fortunate to be able to hire the Icebreakers, a group of ice sculptors from New Hampshire, to come to school. And over at the Sugar Shack, they spent an entire day carving a snowman figure and the Moheramet logo. And our students were able to come out throughout the day and watch this process, ask questions, and learn about ice sculpting, which was pretty awesome for everyone involved. They're still there, very slowly, slowly melting. They'll be there until they're not there any longer. So please come on by, check out the Sugar Shack. They look very awesome. February is a very different thing for us for Year of the Artist. We are hosting a Moheramet museum. And for the three weeks that we're in school in February, we have different grades presenting their museum pieces. These are work that students have done mostly outside of school, two-dimensional, three-dimensional. Some of it is video. We have some iPads set up to show the files that students have sent. This past week has been, this current week, has been fourth grade and second grade, one grade in each wing. Next week is first grade and third grade. And the week before vacation is kindergarten and adults. So we're asking staff, family members, school board members, you are welcome to present something as well, two-dimensional, three-dimensional art, or videos of music or dance that we're presenting. And classes are signed up for all three weeks to be able to walk through the wings and see the artwork of students, comment on it, and it's a, it's a really great community museum experience that we're having. The other thing that we're getting ready to do, of course, is maple sugaring. It's been a very longstanding tradition here at Moheramet, and we're very excited to do that. And we will be tapping most likely before February vacation. I found out that the majority of time here, tapping was always around Town Meeting Day. And so as a sign of changing times, we're now tapping around Valentine's Day. So we'll tap right before break, and then we'll continue to collect our sap and boil it at their Sugar Shack with Mr. Davis and the rest of the crew in Matherne. And we're really excited about that. That's what's going on with us. Questions, comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. Rebecca Nellie, Principal of Oyster River High School. Have a few dates to throw at you tonight. So first, tomorrow night, we have our eighth grade information night, where our counseling department will go over how to sign up for courses with the eighth graders and their parents. Friday night's basketball games, because of weather, have all been moved to Thursday night. So just in case people weren't aware of that, all the games are tomorrow night. The last two weeks, I've received a lot of feedback with the change in the schedule from parents, students, teachers, and staff. And overall, it was very positive. So we're taking all that feedback and looking at that on our leadership team and looking at the end of the year, and we'd like to come out with that schedule early so that people will know what to expect. Mr. Richard and I are creating an opportunity for seniors to visit the old middle school before it's torn down. We'll still do our June walk for seniors in the new middle school with all the kids there. But on February 16, we're going to give seniors an opportunity to walk over during the advisory flex period, go through the building, have old memories, see their teachers, and just be able to have that experience before the building's gone. On March 8, with the elections in the building, and we use the NPR right now for lunches, and so we're going to have a remote date on March 8. And then March 23, we have the PSAT and the SAT for 10th and 11th graders. So for our seniors, we're going to turn that into a college visit day or community service, or do some schoolwork. And then we'll have activities in the building for our ninth graders also. Last but not least, we did get a certificate from Special Olympics for the New Hampshire Unified Champion Schools Program, a certificate of inclusion for the program within the school and everything we do with our students. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight also. Any questions?
I have a question. You know, my understanding is that the, the BLE says you cannot count a remote day as a school day. So when we change to a remote day, does that affect us? And I think it's a great idea, and I'm just curious about how that works.
The majority of the district will be in school, so it won't impact us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others from the district? And from the board? Denise?
I participated in the Building Bridges Forum that the DEIJ committee put together, and I just want to say huge thank, thank you to all the panelists, which included our counselors, Jason Baker and Rihanna Cody, teachers, Jaclyn Jensen, John Silverio, Kate Samar, and Val Wolfson, and especially the students, Zoe Selig and Carolyn. Oh my goodness, I'm spacing out on her last name. Thank you. Thank you, Sterndale. Yes. Who were just absolutely amazing, and I just really thank them for speaking. So clear, they so clearly articulated what their experiences are.
Thank you. Others? Brian?
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming last week to the, our final tour of the new middle school. And I spoke with Dr. Morse the other day, and we'd like to invite the board members to come in, if you're available, on the 28th, which is the day they enter the school. About 7:30 in the morning, we can see the kids as they come in and greet them and see their excitement, and then we can let them go on their day. We can enjoy that day. That could be, it's going to be pretty exciting, I think.
So the idea of being there at 7:30 is to avoid the early morning buses? So if you're there, you'll be able to cheer and greet the kids from the first bus to the last. Jay, what time's the first bus come in?
About 7:40.
Yeah, so if you can get there early enough to avoid the buses, you'll be there to see the kids. If you come in when the buses are rolling, there's no guarantees.
I have a question. As far as, so what's the parking situation?
Good news. We'll have a lot more parking than we do now. We'll have parking underneath the solar panels. You can still park on Dennison and also on Code Drive as well. We do have overflow. If you want, if it's a nice day, you want to take a walk up, we have some overflow parking right here by the fields as well. So there'll be a lot more parking, plenty of parking, I should say.
Others from the board? Do you see it?
Wanted to thank Pam for sharing that with us. That was incredible. And along with Moheramet's work around creative expression with our youngest students, it's that we can do this in the midst of, and even in a way fueled and shaped by what's going on around us, is, is wonderful for supporting our students. I had the wonderful experience on the other end with the high schoolers going to John Bromley's first semester capstone presentations. And there were four students who had completed the semester looking inward to identify their interests and passions and skills, and then trying to identify a problem and build empathy around what was going on and follow a design thinking process towards a solution. The students were motivated by increasing women in sports, by building zero-waste purchasing systems, by supporting trail maintenance and use around locally, and building a peer support system around mental health. And that was really interesting, because it was a student who had taken psychology class and became very interested in what was affecting his peers. And so was able to bridge what was learned in a class outside of the capstone project and to bring it into the capstone project. And the students reflected on how this was a way that they were able to, beyond other classes, that they had taken, really direct their, their own passions to, to a problem, and to use the other skills that they had gained in Oyster River towards, you know, towards a real-world solution. So it's a really promising first pilot, and I'm looking forward to, you know, to getting Johns and others' reports to the board on that, on that process. Also, a really excellent presentation on vaping that was done. So thank you to the, the high school and to those that made that happen. I learned a lot about how, how vaping and tobacco use generally has evolved since I was in school, and it's so important for families to know. So thanks to the counseling department in particular. And then finally, briefly, to respond to Mr. Keller's concerns about potential conflict of interest, since I work for the Karsee School of Public Policy at UNH, and New Hampshire Listens is a program of that, I think Oyster River benefits from rich ties to UNH broadly. We are able to use the expertise and resources from not only the Karsee School, but also the Education Department, Sustainability Institute, and others. And we have UNH residents of this community that both work at UNH and are on the board or serving in other roles. There is no conflict of interest. I've talked with Dr. Morse about this. There are a number of programs at the Karsee School of Public Policy, and I have no material gain. The Center for Impact Finance is one, is where I work around community development. There's a stream on demography. There's a research stream on vulnerable children and families. There's as much professional overlap as with Tom and I have in working with UNH. So just to make that, that clear to the community and to see it as a, as a strength, that we have such overlap with the university in general.
All right. Others? All right, thank you. Next, we're at district reports. Suzanne?
Good evening. I'm going to be speaking with you about the COVID matrix. Catherine's not able to be here this evening. So in looking at the COVID matrix, you'll notice that it is last week's matrix. The state has had some delays in getting the information to us. I think you noticed that at the last meeting as well. So as you can see, we have, we are still in a substantial range for new cases per 100,000 percent positive transmission rate and ICU capacity as well. We are, however, in speaking with the principals currently, in a sufficient ability to cover for staffing. And so that's great. What we're noticing in the buildings is the number of cases is declining as compared to when we returned from February vacation. So, so that's allowing us for the staffing capacity. So we're, we're very pleased about that. We also would like to thank everybody in the community for working with us with our new guidelines. We're the, in speaking with the health offices at the school, they are, they are reporting that people are being very positive about the new guidelines, and they're following them. So we want to thank everyone about that. Catherine was able to get the rapid tests that she was speaking about at the last meeting. And so we have been able to give those rapid tests to families if they need them for home testing. And our nurses are noticing the difference with the home testing. They're noticing that the, the number of tests that they're doing has, have declined. They still are doing some testing within the, within the health offices, but they range now from about one to six per day versus what they were doing before, which was, which was, you know, three times or four times that each day. Anyone have any questions about the matrix? Denise?
I'm just wondering, I just saw on the news today that the contact tracing is no longer going to be, at least the state isn't requiring it. So I'm not sure how that changes what we're doing in the district.
That's a wonderful question. It's something that we will have to talk about as a governance team. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Morse?
Thank you, Michael. So one of the interesting things each year is, you know, which PTO is sponsoring Candidates Night? We have officially been told that the middle school PTO will be sponsoring Candidates Night. They are meeting tomorrow to outline their specifics. So in terms of, other than it's scheduled for February 15, we don't have any specific information, but it'll be forthcoming. So that's what we know about Candidates Night so far. We do have five candidates, which is pretty exciting. I wanted to bring the board up to speed in relation to our Communications Committee. So at the last meeting, you know, we kind of reviewed the results. And then we met in the committee and we had pretty lengthy conversation. And the minutes for that are in your folder. We talked about the 42 pages of comments and organizing them. I think that the overarching organization will be the five emergent themes that the committee came to, which are centralized hub information, consistency and clarity, administration and board interaction with the community, soliciting of input and tapping community resources, and administration and classroom interactions with the community. Beneath those broad headings will create categorizations that make sense to the conversations we've had as a board. So the next step is for the SAU leadership to sit down and create those broad headings. I want to send them to the Communications Committee for feedback because I really don't want to go through 42 pages of comments and then somebody say, we should have had this category or that category. So I thought when we met last time that the UNH Survey Center would do that work. They have categorized them according to the questions they asked. And that doesn't get us any, it doesn't get us as deep into the common links between the comments. And so we're gonna take it over at the SAU and, and figure out how to get that worked on in relation to all the other stuff we're doing. But that's the next step, is to get the categories done. Questions? Denise?
Just curious as far as when we can expect the results of the community survey?
Actually, anytime. Yeah, we should be getting that.
So possibly for the next board meeting, then?
I would, I wouldn't dare. Yes, yeah, yeah, the next one, if.
Well, depending on when it is.
Yeah, if we're talking about March, I think that would be reasonable. I did not ask Dr. Smith specifically that question, so that's why I'm kind of hesitating. But I would expect that we'd have them within a month. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to the big issue, which is, you know, the opening of the middle school, which is pretty gung-ho and exciting. You know, for the students, as Brian alluded to, they're all going to arrive at the new middle school on the 28th. And I know Jay and his staff are pretty excited by it. So I think what I'll do is I'll follow Jay. So Jay, you want to share the, the dates with the board and the activities you have planned?
Jay Vashar, Counsel of the Middle School? Wow, really? I look at this, I mean, this is quite a historic moment for our school district. I know for myself, for my staff and students. When we think about one Code Drive at the new building is gonna be, the last time we opened up a school there, a brand new school, was 1935. So this is like a very significant historical moment. That's not lost on me at all. We have a lot of great people, staff and students, planning activities. I've mapped out some dates and I'll go over some really important dates right now. Some of it's gonna be a surprise on the 28th. I feel fortunate and hope you all can attend that moment. Again, students have been helping with this plan. Some significant dates that are upcoming, just this next week, on Friday and Saturday, we're offering viewings of the old Oyster River Middle School. So on Friday from 4:00 to 6:00, and on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. I've actually reached out to groups. The Oyster River Alumni Association's been helpful for putting that out there. I've actually emailed, I have a list of former teachers who have retired over the past 20 years and reached out to them. So I'm confident the attendance is gonna be good. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And also, I, with Principal Noe's permission, I actually emailed all the high school students here to invite them to those dates as well. So it should be a lot of fun on those two days. Then down the road, we're moving to, when we're in the, we're be, in the old school on that Monday and Tuesday, what we plan orientation time for the students. So all of our students will be in the new building on that Monday and Tuesday for an hour to get acclimated and oriented in terms of where they'll be, where the UAs will be, where they take strength class, this is where they'll eat, this is what the lunch line will look like, this is where students will get dropped off on the buses, your parents drop you off, this is what that will look like, walkers, et cetera. So there's a lot of time and energy and work being put into that to make sure the students feel very comfortable when they come on the 28th. They know what to do and where to go. So there's a lot of work behind that, and that's really exciting. The 18th, please again, put that on your calendar. We'll have lunch in the new school for school board members and some invited guests. That'll be a special day as well. We have some special plans with that as well. So that's, that's something to put on your calendar. And then I'll get a lot of questions. When can the community come into the new building and see the new school? So I have a date set aside for that. My student task force is actually gonna be helping with that. I've been working with our architects to create maps. So when guests come into the building who are new, we can provide them a map so they have an idea of what's on what floor when they're going through the building. So on Thursday, February 24th, and I'll share this information with the various Lee, Matt Berry and the Durham update, on Thursday, February 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the community members can come in and visit the new school in that night as well from 4:00 to 6:00. So again, if you're getting questions about, when can I see the new school? I'm a community member. That's the day to do it, on those two separate time periods. And of course, lastly, on the 28th, again, that's, that's a big deal. Our first day of school, that's how I look at it. Again, it's gonna be a historic moment. And then our parents have also asked and inquired, when can we be in the new building to see where our children are learning in this new facility? So I have two dates set aside, Tuesday, March 1st. That's gonna be for 5th grade and 8th grade. From 5:00 until 7 o'clock, we have things mapped out. So we don't have those entire groups in the building. So I have a schedule for that. That's actually been shared with the school community this past weekend. And then on Thursday, March 3rd, 6th and 7th grade will be in the building from 5:00 to 7:00.
Jay, will the teachers be there for that as well?
That'll be voluntary. I'm sure a lot of teachers will be, but I'll be voluntary for the teachers to be there. So. Another big item I want to share too is I have a lot of interest in terms of the old bricks in the building. So I've been working with a construction company to have essentially a timeline of what that will look like. And that'll be mid-March. And I recognize that people will want mementos, particularly from the old part of the building, 1935. So we're gonna work really hard to create as many mementos for people who are interested in those. So. I'll tell you, I'm nervous. And again, a positive nervous energy. I mean, this is a big deal, first day of school on the 28th. But we're super excited. The kids are pumped. They want to be in the building now. And just looking forward to this opportunity. And I've told you all before, I just, I'm very grateful for this community in terms of what they provided our students. I have been fortunate to bring some guests. I had a guest in there this afternoon. And every time I'm in the building, for one, the guests are, they can't believe it. And I often have to pinch myself. I'm like, this is gonna be our learning environment for our staff and students. So you can hear the nervous energy and rigor down. I'm just really excited about this. So once in a lifetime opportunity. I'm glad to answer any questions. Tom?
What time for lunch on the 18th?
So 11:00. I have a little special event planned. And then to eat lunch, it'll be about 11:30. So it'd be great if everyone could be there at 11:00.
What will be the communication for parents who drop off their students, knowing where to go, what route to take?
Yep, so that'll be coming in. I encourage, that's a great question, you see. I'm encouraging parents over, if you're around February break, to take a drive-by to the school and get an idea, drive through the layout, what that looks like for parent drop-off. Great question.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. Just to follow up the new middle school. You know, you have to envision that when you're going into a new school, it's like moving into a new home. And we all have had that experience, where we've moved into new places. And everything's not gonna be perfect. So Jay and I have been messaging to the teachers, you know, keep a list in your classroom and keep it for about 30 days. We're gonna live in the new school. We're gonna learn about the new building. We'll find out its strengths and we'll find out places where it can be improved. Obviously, structurally, it's sound. It's just a matter of getting people used to their new home. In regards to opening a new building of this complexity, it's again, not that much different than moving into a new house. Everything isn't gonna be worth it, working perfectly on the first day. So I just wanted to bring the board up to speed this evening on things that I anticipate will be happening in terms of delays. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about delays in technology. This is not the vendor's fault. It's about chip delays that have hit, you know, internationally and then supply chain issues. However, I did have a conversation with the technology vendor today. And if the, the new interactive boards are not ready, they will have substitutes in place for our teachers. They won't be the interactive boards. They'll be, you know, one technology age older. But they will work fine. And they, in the, in their, in their vision, the worst case scenario is two weeks later, the new boards will be in and they'll slide out the old ones and put in the new ones. So they've been really responsive to my communication from a couple of weeks ago. Much different, much different interaction. All the furniture was to be on time. Eight tables got broken in shipping, so they have to be reordered. Those will probably be a couple of weeks into March before they, they are replaced. Doesn't stop, and I want to say, none of this stops us from opening the school. The heat pump is being regulated. We have representatives from the manufacturer and the vendor working together to bring the heat pump onboard. So I would tell you, the heat pump is not onboard today. If you walk in that building, you wouldn't know it because it's a super insulated building, triple insulated glass. And the boilers are keeping the building well heated. And as soon as this comes on, as soon as the heat pump comes onboard, we'll shut the boilers off. Unfortunately, we have no delivery dates for the kilns. Jay has already talked to the art teachers. It just means that the clay art projects won't happen immediately. They may not happen this spring. The kilns are one of those things that we've been having a really difficult time getting a delivery date on. We have five refrigerators that are back ordered. They don't affect the kitchen. They're actually teacher room refrigerators. And that little kitchen across from World Language all have refrigerators, but they're not in and we don't have a delivery date on those. So that, that will, that's just the way it's going to be as we open school because we can't, you know, make these things appear. Side light windows have been super aggravating for our contractor. They have sent multiple dimensions to the, to the manufacturer. There's 36 of them. And so far, the company that makes them has sent over 100 side light windows to the school that are, don't fit. And we keep on sending them back. You all know Andre. Andre had a very strong worded conversation with this vendor. This could stop us from opening the school. However, again, because of the contractor, he has a workaround and he'll have the, the mis-sized windows in place to meet code. And when the new ones come in, he'll take out those and put in those. So again, that's, it's, it's, they have a quality backup to make sure they work. This seems weird, but there's these five-inch hinges that are on acoustic rated doors. They're supposed to come in with no pre-hilled, pre-drilled holes. Two orders now, they've come in with the holes pre-drilled. So again, this could stop us from opening the school, but our contractor is developing a workaround until the correct ones arrive. So those two issues, 6th and 7th, could impact, could have impacted our ability to get a certificate of occupancy. But again, because of VAWAN, we are in really a good place to, to substitute and make sure that the building is safe. And then the big, big issue coming up in the next two weeks isn't a delay. It's on time, which is the air quality issues for the building. And, you know, our working staff, our parents and our students, of course, will be very interested in making sure the air quality is where it should be. And we don't anticipate we'll have any problems with that. And then just as an aside, I don't know if, how many of you saw the, the pictures that Brian took of the buses under the canopy? We had 12 buses under the canopy over the last storm. We could have had 16. And it worked just as it was supposed to. It's really wonderful. The buses, we had 10 drivers come in to clean off the buses on Sunday for a total time of two hours. So that gives you an indication of how speedy they were able to get the buses up and running. And then the side benefit of using the canopy for a parking area is that they were able to clean out the bus property very, very quickly because the buses weren't in the way. So they cleared the snow off the bus property. They went up and got the buses at the middle school, brought them down to the property. It really was amazing. There was, you know, some conversation on social media about snow on the buses. When you look at the pictures, you'll see that, you know, it's wind-blown snow. It's the buses that were on the outside. Way better than spending hours and hours taking snow off the top of a bus. So I just want to say yippee for thinking of putting those buses under the canopy because it really, really worked well. I'd be glad to answer any questions of the board. Brian?
So you said it took two hours to clean all the buses off. What would it normally take if all the buses were, were there?
Double that at least, if not more. The drivers really come in, you know, probably 1:00 in the morning to clear off the buses for, for the runs that, that leave at 5:45 or 6:00. So cut the time in half. And it was far more efficient in terms of, you know, clearing off the property, which is something we hadn't even thought, thought of. And, you know, just the plow trucks and going in and making it all possible. So it really did work well. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And... I'm gonna invite Baca back up. And we want to talk to you about establishing a firm date for graduation.
I'm very excited to be talking about graduation. So I respectfully request that you take into consideration June 10th of this year in the evening for our graduation ceremony. And we would plan a rain date of June 11th, the next morning, which would be Saturday.
And that will require a motion of the board, Michael?
Brian?
Just one quick question. Will there be bagpipes this year?
There will be bagpipes.
Then I'll make that motion to accept that.
I'll second, I'll second the motion to schedule graduation for Friday, June 10th. Any discussion? Olivia? Is that okay with you?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Seven in favor, Student Rep in favor? Graduation will be June 10th, Weather Committee.
Thank you very much.
And then I know that we were as excited as days opening the school, moving the school board meetings to the new school. One of the pieces of equipment that Alex needs to do that is back ordered. And the only, the option would be to haul this equipment down. But there's, for right now, we'd rather not do that. And if it's okay with the board, we would like to stay here until such time as it makes sense to move to the middle school. So in the March 2nd, we are planning to be at the new middle school. I'm suggesting we stay here until such time as we get a green light from Alex.
Okay.
And that's it, Michael?
All right. No sue tonight?
No sue tonight.
Student Representative Report, Olivia?
So not too much for tonight. MOR, Mouth of the River, the school magazine. The publication is slightly delayed, but it should be coming out in the next week or so. I wanted to go over a quick midterm overview and how that went because last time we spoke, we were anxiously awaiting that. Overall, it was, it went decently well. Some thoughts that I heard from students, one quote that I picked out was, it was a little hectic simply because of the relearning week, like offsetting the balance of typical midterms. But overall, it went well and went by pretty quick, so not too much argument there. But then I also heard another comment saying that they were super happy to have the relearning week, to be able to have that extra time to study and get that relearning in, which I agree with both sides. There's pros and cons. And it was kind of, it was interesting to work around, but it was, overall, went decently well, as well as midterm kids go. That's, that is. But, and then senior class government is working on a fundraiser with, for Krispy Kreme doughnuts, which they're planning to start around March 8th, I believe. And then start of the semester has been going pretty well, the first few days in. Exciting to have new class changes and the fresh start of changing classes, I guess. Yeah, overall, super good. Yeah. Oh, any questions?
Who's doing the fundraiser for Krispy Kreme?
The senior class.
Okay.
Government, yeah.
Don't forget us.
Okay, I'll make sure to get your orders.
All right. Thank you. No finance committee report tonight, don't believe?
Nope.
All right. That brings us to the unanimous consent agenda, which is, just consists of the policies. Is there anybody who'd like to discuss the policies separately? All right. In that case, I will move to approve the unanimous consent agenda, which is for second read and adoption, the following policies, JIC student conduct, JICD student discipline and due process. And for deletion, the previous JICD.
I will second that.
All right. All those in favor?
And I just have one really tiny little correction. The word "keep" is on page two of policy JICD. It's the paragraph that's in red that was added, well, it was, you know, was taken, it was edited or whatever, and then we were questioning whether we needed it. And so the word "keep" is like in parentheses at the end of the paragraph, and that was just to remind us to keep it. So it needs to be, it's not part of the policy, so it just needs to be struck from there. So that's the only change.
I hope, Denise, you could give a, just a very quick summary of any changes or motivation or sort of broader context for this important topic of student conduct and consequences. It seems mostly, what should we know in looking at this? I know that we need to review the policies at some, at each point. Is there anything particularly meaningful that has been changed or broader context for the edits that have been suggested?
No, that was, that's been there. It's been there through revisions. It was a reminder that we needed to, at one point, the policy committee was questioning whether we needed that.
I don't mean that "keep." I mean for the edits.
Yeah. No, there's no, I mean, it's, as it was presented at the last board meeting, so we haven't changed anything else at all.
Changes were required by a change in state law, you see, and it's, they're really designed to make it harder, in a good way, for students to be suspended or expelled.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving these policies for second read? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. So I'm just going to take a moment to remind the board that the purpose of the unanimous consent agenda is to quickly approve things that don't require discussion. So if something is going to require discussion or if we have questions about it, please, it should not be on the unanimous consent agenda. All right. Moving to the discussion and action items. Update on House Bill 1255. Tom?
Thank you. On the 20th of January, Dr. Morrison and I testified before the House Education Committee. And just to give you a sense of my testimony, I focused on one sentence of the proposed bill. I'll read you the sentence. "No teacher shall advocate any doctrine or theory promoting a negative account or representation of the founding and history of the United States of America in New Hampshire public schools, which does not include the worldwide context of now outdated and discouraged practices." Normally, in a writing class, we teach you to avoid double negatives, and this has a quadruple negative, which makes it very difficult to understand, and the language itself is difficult to understand. So I analyze that. I'll just read you the ending of my testimony. "The language is impossibly vague, a pileup of undefined terms. There is a particular danger in the vagueness of this proposed law. Teachers will not know what is prohibited and what is allowed, and with their teaching credentials at stake, who would blame them if they didn't touch topics like Japanese internment, which would be of a service to New Hampshire students? These stories need to be told, and they were surely not part of the history I learned in school. Any attempt to regulate in a few sentences something as complex as the teaching of history is destined to be misinterpreted and contested. The language in this bill is particularly sloppy and unworthy of being passed into law. I urge you to designate it inexpedient." When I took this, and Dr. Morse, I don't know if you want to say something about what you said?
We just added that, you know, in a state that emphasizes local control, that school boards across the state already have policies in place against indoctrination of students, and that annually, we remind our teachers, especially during election time, that they certainly can teach history, they can talk about candidates, they can't advocate or encourage, and it's certainly not indoctrinate students. So we already have a local policy, and that's where this belongs, at the local board level.
And I've taken this commentary, this testimony and turned it into an op-ed piece, speaking for myself, which appeared in the Seacoast Papers. And I just learned today that it'll be at the Manchester Union Leader tomorrow, so getting the word out. Just maybe another word that, when you go to the hearings, Dr. Morse was the only superintendent who spoke. I was the only board member who spoke on this issue. And I think whether we should think about being a presence for some of these bills because there's some really wild ones. There's a bill to disband cooperative school districts. Think about that. And there's a bill that you have to put every bit of curriculum material in a centralized place for teachers to, for parents to look at. And if you just look at one classroom, all the material in one classroom, and start thinking about, you know, 100 classrooms and what that would look like, just the utter impracticality. And I almost think casualness of some of these bills, like have they thought through them? But they're legitimate bills that we need to, I think, maybe, I mean, going forward, it's up to the future boards to have a presence there. And I just personally, even though I'll be off the board, I want to follow this bill. And if I have anything to, you know, report, I will take my three minutes of public comment and be back to let you know what's happening.
Thank you, Tom.
I so appreciate you taking the time to do that. Speaking personally, it's difficult with such a range of bills and such a number of extreme positions to know where and when to get involved. I think the divisive concepts language, in some sense, it might not have passed on its own were it not added to the budget. And so understanding the, what happens within one, the House versus what happens with reconciliation versus other means of getting laws passed, that's something that I personally have been wrestling with because one only has a certain amount of time and energy, and we have such a large house. It's hard to, you know, how do we know which ones to respond to? But I'm so glad that you did on this one because it's obviously pertinent to our work here as a district.
And I think we may need to cultivate, I mean, working with Barrett Christina, which bills, you know, we have people who are kind of more in the know who could talk to us. And there are representatives on the board who, in the House Committee, who are willing to talk to us just to let us know kind of what's coming up. But I think we need to be more involved in this because you go there, the fact that no school board, no school board other than us testified on such a central bill, that could be really catastrophic. I mean, compared to the SB, the divisive concepts bill they're referring, I mean, that's like total clarity compared to this, you know? So I think, you know, we need to get in the know, figure out which bills we could testify, and maybe have a position, you know, we have a position for liaison to the School Boards Association, whether we should be more actively present or have somebody who might, you know, go testify for certain bills that affect us.
What constraints or guardrails are there on having individual board members or, you know, having this sort of discussion as a board around bills and laws?
It's really about time. The, you know, the week before I testified on the repeal of the divisive concepts bill, and we were sitting there for four hours. And in our case, we were closer to the beginning. We heard a half dozen or so people testify. But the legislature also takes written testimony, and we have the School Boards Association and the Superintendents Association who both are actively monitoring bills. So, you know, as Tom alluded to, you have to be really selective in terms of, you know, when you're going to testify, what you're going to testify on because that, just to do the repeal of the divisive concepts bill, took me out of circulation for, you know, better part of a day. And so it is really a big commitment. I know that, you know, just Dan going in, doing the School Boards Association piece, their deliberative session, I can't remember what it's called, but the, you know, that's a big commitment from a board member. So it's really paying attention to the School Boards Association's lead and the Superintendent's Association's lead, and them figuring out what they're going to testify on. So this is the strategy I used with Tom. We called the executive director and said, "We're going to go testify on this loyalty bill." And the reason I do that is because that frees them up to go testify on another bill, like the dissolution of cooperative school districts, which, by the way, if passed, takes a, and takes place next year. So it's not even, you can sit down with your cooperative school district partners and go through some kind of logical process and conversation. It's, they're just dissolved. And so then, you know, what is the impact of that? Because there's no system anymore, you know? And so you can imagine Lee and Madbury trying to build a system on their own when they've been partners with Durham for, since 1954. That's just not something you can just do. And so the, those are the kind of crazy things that are happening in Concord, and there does need to be a voice. But we have to do it strategically because no one school board and no one organization can cover literally the thousands of bills that they're considering, and then which ones impact school districts the most. And so it's really hard in the current process because they're not accepting remote testimony. They'll take your written testimony, or you have to be present. And so it's time-consuming, it's important work, and we have to be very strategic about where we're going to spend that time.
Is it appropriate to have that as part of the superintendent's update or to formalize the, as Tom suggested, the advice from council or from the School Boards Association on which bills would be worth our time?
I think it would probably be a separate agenda item. You know, the School Boards Association provides a weekly update during the session of activity in Concord on the bills that they're following. It doesn't go into a level of detail that Jim and Tom are talking about in terms of strategy about what they're doing, but it does describe the position they're taking and where the bills are at in the process. So there's that to work from. You know, it's, some of these things, they get scheduled sometimes quickly, and there's not always time for us to meet and act and take a formal position. I don't know if we had a chance to meet between the time of the hearing on HB 1679, which is the dissolution of cooperative school districts, between the time that the hearing was scheduled and the hearing happened, I don't know that we even had a meeting. So certainly, the bill is out there, but...
Yeah, I don't want to add more, you know, more red tape or more bureaucracy around this, but I would very much value someone who could help navigate the, you know, both the extreme content of the bill, but also its likelihood and the, you know, the incremental value of our involvement in it. You know, the cooperative, the dissolution of cooperative districts is, you know, is very extreme. I don't have a sense of its likelihood of passing and what our voice would mean in that. So if there's a way to, for someone more knowledgeable to do some of that work for us, I think we would benefit from that.
A lot of that stuff is online. You can actually go research that online. There are organizations that follow all that. So you can, it takes time, but you can go in and you can actually dig in and get testimony and everything else and find that. I mean, task it to somebody else is really, if you want the information, it's out there readily available, you're tasking someone, taking up somebody else's time to get the same information to you that you get yourself.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. Is it something that we do as individuals, or is this something that's at a board level? I don't know the answer to that.
You can always do that on your own time.
I understand. So I think what Tom was bringing forward was that as a board that is trying to, you know, to be a leader in New Hampshire, if there are ways that we should, you know, should act as a body. Again, I don't, it's hard to know the lines for that, but if that is in fact what Tom was suggesting, then there would, that it would be something that would be worth investing in.
So you see, if this helps, if the New Hampshire School Boards Association, the executive director, Barrett Christina, if he feels that it's important for a school board or school board presence, he will send out a message to everybody and say, "This is where I need you to step up and either submit written testimony or go and testify." And the Superintendent's Association does the same thing. When a bill is like super hot and they need people, they activate, you know, the state. The cooperative school district bills, there's about a half dozen of them. The, so the School Boards Association is suggesting to the chair of the Education Committee that it's not timely to pass these bills without a lot of thought beforehand, and suggesting that they take them all and put them together and then put them in a study committee, which would provide time for people to develop plans around them or to decide they're just not expedient to go forward with. So that's the strategy on the cooperative bills because no one in their right mind would expect that there would be a dissolution in one year. So that's the strategy there. So they have a whole bunch of different ways of trying to work through these bills, short of them, you know, just being inexpedient to legislate.
Let's move on to the DEIJ job description. Jim?
I'm going to just introduce this concept and invite Suzanne up. The board asked, and it really was, you know, a lot of conversation at the board level about the level of detail that the previous job description had. It wasn't that the DEIJ committee or the board didn't know what they were doing. It was more along the lines of, it's sort of like you're hungry and you go into a buffet and you fill your plate up with too much food. And I think that Tom in particular was very sharp to point out that the, it would be impossible for a human being to do everything that was in the initial job description. So the board asked that we bring the job description back to the DEIJ committee and try to focus on exactly what we want to get accomplished, what are the priorities. So Suzanne led that charge, so.
So we did, as a committee, we worked together to identify and focus So, we did, as a committee, we worked together to identify and focus areas and we did that in some small groups and worked through mostly the essential functions and responsibilities. The committee did have some time to get, some of the groups did have some time to go further down into the knowledge skills and abilities required as well as the experience and education. So, we did receive feedback in all three areas, but the focus for the committee really was around the essential functions and responsibilities, which if, I believe there were around 12, almost double what, what you're seeing here now. And so from that feedback that we received from the committee in that small group work, Jim and I went through it and we consolidated some and some we removed. And what you'll see is there is a greater focus here on faculty and staff and less on leadership. And so when you, when you look through it, it's, it's definitely a reflection of the committees, which has, the committee, which has faculty, which has parents, community members, leadership, it has a variety of different stakeholders. And they felt that the primary focus really should be to support faculty, staff and students at the building level. And so that's, that's really what's reflected in the essential functions and responsibilities. We did bring it back to the committee Monday, Monday evening and, and had the committee look at it again, just to validate the changes that were made and, and that was successful. They felt that it reflected the work that we had done. If anyone has any questions about the process or about the description.
Suzanne, this, this position is a non-certified position, correct?
Correct. You could have, you could have a teacher that is a certified, you could have someone who is a certified teacher apply, but you do not need to be a certified teacher.
And we budgeted, what, Jim, 120 for this? Just doing some rough math, in this salary range though, just, we budgeted 120. You're looking at a salary range of 95 to 105. Even a non-certified person is going to be an additional 15,000 or so, 14 to 15,000 in retirement costs. That brings us to 120. And we have benefits on top of that. It brings us well over 120.
Yeah.
So, how are we going to square that out?
If we need to increase the cost, there are a couple of areas we did not address when we were talking about how we would pay for this. We didn't touch the communications line at all and there was one other area that's not going to come to my brain right now. We need a little bit more to cover for the insurance, we'll be able to do it.
I mean, then if it is, does end up being a certified teacher, that's going to add another six, $7,000 on top of that.
Yeah. So, this person would not be part of the guild. This person would be working under Suzanne as a coordinator.
But if they're a certified instructor, you have to charge, you have to give to the state the certified share of the retirement, which is 21%.
Oh, yeah. I'm not arguing that. Yeah, yeah.
So, that's quite a, that's a big chunk and it's not going to go down anytime soon. So, I'm just trying to do the math in my head and make sure we don't blow the budget line for this particular position.
If we, we need to go there, Brian, we'll go there and bring it back to the Board.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I think the most basic one is number one, under the essential functions and responsibilities, doesn't sound to me like a function or a, you know, it's, it's not a deliverable type thing the right, the way the rest of the items in that section are. It's, it's the, it's the collection of dimensions that we've been talking about, minus a couple, actually. But it doesn't jive with the rest of that section, I don't, I don't think. I'm not sure where, where that belongs, but.
In the, in conversations, we talked a lot about the, this person really working with and facilitating and collaborating with, with faculty, staff and with students in a variety of different ways. So, they, they could participate with the sustainability committee, they could participate with different clubs, different parts of the MTSSB perhaps, there could be a variety of ways that they could involve themselves. And so I think that's, that is what that's trying to encapsulate. We could, we could look at that language, Michael, and make it more of a deliverable.
I think if it was a period after issues, it meets the criteria of the other sections. I think that it got wordy once we got past that. So, I think there's another structural piece that can be, that we can address, Michael.
Well, and it, the, the rest of the items in that section are those, you know, it's specific around, around professional learning experiences and interest groups for the most part. They're, they're more, like I understand what those other things are and what they look like and what they're doing. And this first one is, I don't know, it's, it's the ingredients, not, not the.
Aspirational.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And then, and then the dimension that we have talked about in the past that I don't see reflected in here is inclusion around disability. And I don't know if that was left out intentionally or not, but I didn't see that in here when I went through it.
Yep, I can go back through.
Was not intentional, Michael.
Yeah, it's not intentional.
Brian?
That was a question I've had since we first brought this up, but I'm reading through this and I'm trying to find a way to how this position will be measured year over year. I mean, a teacher is relatively easy. You can look at test scores, graduation rates, you can, you know, look at everything like that. But how do we measure this position after a year to say, "We've, you know, we've spent our money well and we've, we've moved the line so much from one year to another." How do we measure that? Can't be one thing, it's got to be multiple things. What would that be?
So, I, I looked down through that, Brian, and I see many things that can be measured right through those, those seven points. If anybody's collaborating, that would be who they met with, what they were working on, you know, that kind of thing. Plans and leads professional development experiences, that also is very measurable. Supports the school-based DEIJ committees, how is that happening? Were they attending the meetings? Were they guiding the teacher leaders? So, that's how I would do it. I would base it right on the job description and capture the data that supports these items.
And would that be what is on the evaluation?
Yeah. When I'm doing an evaluation, I go to the job description.
It must be different than a teacher, obviously.
Yep. Yeah, that's how I do it. I use the job description. So, what evidence exists that that happened? That's exactly how I do it.
Questions, comments? What's next in this process?
Well, with the minor corrections we're hearing tonight, the next step in this process is to wait for our budget to be approved and then we'll advertise for the position and set up a interview committee, be a subset of our DEIJ committee, which has representation from all the stakeholders. We'll develop the questions that we want to ask and then we'll do a screening and start the interview process in the spring because we want to get the person on board so they can get oriented to our system. So, once the budget passes, Michael, we go through the, we start the hiring process. Tom?
Just in salary range, I think there's a typo there, right? 95?
Yeah, there is.
That'd be pretty low right there.
That would cover Brian's question.
And just maybe a little bit more serious question. So, you're paying it at pretty much the top teacher rate and that's kind of, but you're asking for like a 260-day.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just wondering whether you might have to pay more to get somebody to do this job than 105, you know? And maybe, maybe, would you have some flexibility to go above that or is that pretty much a, a solid?
Well, I, yeah, I would think to go above that, I'd have to come back to the Board and identify where the resources are. I think that's the heart of Brian's question. You know, I mean, the other, the other way we can go is we can give it a work year like the assistant principals have of 216 days, but we really wanted this person on board year-round because there's a lot of work to do in the summertime to prepare for the teachers. I think we, I mean, what I, what I based this on was what Exeter and Manchester were paying for the similar position. So, I'd like to test the waters with this number and see where we are. I think, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
One interesting piece about this position is that it could draw from so many different fields or sectors already. So, you know, this is a very competitive salary for someone who's been working in the nonprofit sector, you know, in, in, in certain places and as a, a step up. So, if we're not purely sourcing from teachers who have been going up that salary scale, there may be more options as well.
So, this is the first time that the, the public is getting to see this as well. Is there an opportunity for them to provide feedback, anybody who's taken a look at it after tonight?
Yeah, we can post it and if anybody has, I mean, the, the public, the, yeah, absolutely. We can post it on the webpage and if anybody wants to add any comments, they can send them directly to me and, you know, we'll see what goes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Our, our school district clerk has, has resigned and we need to have a clerk for the deliberative session next week.
Right. And so we checked with our attorney and the only criteria in state law is the person has to be a resident. And given the timing of deliberative session, Sue Caswell has volunteered to do this work for us and I would recommend to the School Board that we appoint her as the clerk for deliberative session.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sue Caswell as our clerk for the deliberative session on February 8.
Second from Brian. Further discussion?
No, she's not, wouldn't just be the clerk for the deliberative session, wouldn't that be the clerk for the vote itself too?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So, we have to change the motion to.
All right. So.
For this, maybe for this election cycle.
Okay. So, I, yeah, I'll take, that's fine with me.
So, the motion is to appoint.
Friendly amendment, whatever.
The, the motion is to appoint Sue Caswell as the district clerk for the 2022 election cycle. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Sue is appointed as the district clerk. All right. And then the next item is proposed cancellation of the regular board meeting on February 16th. Dr. Morse is going to be out of town at a conference that week. The middle school staff will be busily migrating from the old building to the new building and middle school students will be out of school those days. We don't have a lot of items that are timely that day in particular because Dr. Morse will not be here. So, I'm proposing that we not have a meeting on February 16th. Looking for a motion for this because we have a policy that says we meet on the first and third Wednesdays and so this would be to change that. Brian?
Motion to cancel the February 16th regular board meeting.
Motion, Brian?
Al's second.
And a second from Denise. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. All right. Any other committee updates? Yes, Denise?
Long Range Planning Committee met on Monday and we will be presenting at the March 2nd, School Board Meeting. Heather Smith will be presenting and she has, for anyone who ever wanted to see the behind the scenes like Ma, it's all going to be there, which, you know, might be interesting for folks. So, worked really hard on it. So, I am pretty excited to have that presented.
Excellent. Other committee updates? I, I couldn't remember this earlier, so this isn't exactly a committee update, but I think it's important to recognize where to go here. So, today is National Girls and Women in Sports Day and also in that theme, I think we should recognize our high school girls indoor track distance medley relay team. Do you want to take it from here? Should I read this off?
You can do it.
All right. So, the, the girls high school track, indoor track distance medley relay team, which consists of Haley Kavanaugh, Talia Bonifatto, Erin Carty and Mackenzie Cook are headed to Nationals. Congratulations. Who about cats?
Freshmen and sophomores.
They are all freshmen and sophomores.
That is amazing.
And I did have a quick update from the DEIJ committee meeting from, from Monday. It is Black History Month. The committee, of course, while Black History, American History should not be relegated to a single month, it is an opportunity to go deep in. Our high school teachers as well as the Oyster River Equity and Justice Group in the community have been working together to develop a calendar similar to last year that will have activities and opportunities on days throughout the month to learn more about Black History. So, I think that will be available soon, though I'm not sure in which, in which form. Contact me if, in a few days, if you haven't come across it and would like to.
Thank you. Committee updates? All right. Is anybody who is interested in speaking of public comment?
So, we've got three things, I'm sure I can do in three minutes. Member Terrell, just in this meeting tonight, using her own words, "Look how lucrative it is to have somebody enter a DEIJ position from a nonprofit." I hope that's a red flag for people. Secondly, I'm going to use an analogy. Suppose I work for a steel company and we're looking for this building and I work for the steel company and there's a proposal for aluminum or maybe carbon fiber. However, I propose steel. I have my employer there. I participate in that meeting and then yet again vote to propose steel. There is no difference between that analogy and what is happening with Member Terrell with New Hampshire Listens. This is very serious stuff, folks. Do not look at the ends justifies means. There is absolutely no separation between that organization. I can provide tons of documents. They actually consider themselves to actively facilitate. They have stated positions. You can look on their website. It's corporate backed, you know, the, the member herself has even mentioned about how it's lucrative. So, then ask yourself again, if you guys decide to hire somebody that was part of Carcy or from New Hampshire Listens, would she be able to raise her hand and not recuse herself? And if she has to recuse herself there, what would be the difference between that committee and, and the position that was actually assigned that you guys were talking about? There's no difference. So, regardless of what she thinks, whether it's financial, if I work for the steel company, maybe I'm not a sales guy or whatever, but I can gain favor, hey, great job. You know, there's other ways to get recognized and benefit from that. So, I would really strongly consider the Board strike this. It will come up at the deliberative session. It's not going to go away. And if the Board doesn't really look at this seriously and just pencil whips this and hand waves it is not an issue, then it really is the beginning of rotten stink on a Board. And then the next thing I wanted to bring up, and I want to put this in the record because it hasn't been talked about and it's kind of disturbing and it also speaks to rotting the Board. So, the Board has been engaged in deliberation with a lawyer with both Dover and the Barrington School District regarding tuition. There's been scant information about that. Personally, as a taxpayer, I find that there's a lack of transparency on this, you know, and I think, you know, voters have a right to know what's going on, what we were at risk for, what's, what's been the outcome of this. And so this, to me, is a sign, Boards that get arrogant, that they sit on, on there too long and think this reelection is, is, is a foregone conclusion. And I would really like to see more of an update. I'm going to submit this, pretty much doing this for anybody on the record so they can go and look and see. I've actually contacted state officials and even they were surprised to find out about this ongoing issue.
Anybody else have public comment?
Sorry, really quickly, I forgot to say this before, I'm Lauren Selig from Durham, but I really want to thank Tom and Al for their years of service on the Board. It is a thankless task. You're often caught in a line of not pretty things and I really appreciate the time and dedication you put in to really serving the best interest of all the children in the community and not coming at this from any personal vendetta or approach. And I also want to thank Brian because I know the middle school has been a labor of blood, sweat, tears, financial planning and everything else. And I know that all of the Board was involved, but I know that your blood lies in there far more than most people's and just thank you for your work at night as well.
All right. Our future meeting dates are here. February 8th, next Tuesday is the deliberative session in the auditorium. We have. We have posted a additional school board meeting to be held immediately following the deliberative, if needed, based on if there's any action taken to modify the warrant or that we need to take to, to clarify the warrant or finally approve the warrant, if there are any changes. We will not have a regular board meeting on the 16th, but there will be a manifest meeting in order to process the manifest. And then our next regular board meeting will be right here in the library on March 2. We do have one item for non-public session tonight. It is discussion of the Superintendent's evaluation. And so I will move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA, Chapter 91A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. And a second? Brian, is that a second? All right, thank you. So a motion from me, a second from Brian, this is, requires a roll call vote, so can we go around?
UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Al Horland, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
All right, thank you. We're in non-public.